Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have a healthcare presentation as our study session. We have Jonathan, and I'm not sure how to say your last name. We'll be doing a split screen for us. Go ahead, Sarah. Take over.
If I could just interject real quick before Jonathan starts.
Yes.
I, Elizabeth Harry, am the Human Resource Director. I work with this group. There's three individuals on this Zoom that are from Plant Moran. Jonathan Triompy is one of those people, lead crew member of his team. Claudia and Jennifer are somewhere on my screen that they work with our account in Dearborn Heights. And so this meeting, the purpose of this meeting was we had a request to provide an overview of healthcare to kind of frame things for all the council members, especially since there are some very new council members. And this, of course, healthcare is a significant portion of the budget. So the request was that this was going to be presented, what it is to be self insured, what our total costs are for both active and retired personnel. And so that's what tonight's presentation is about. And so with that, I will have Jonathan present the slides that we discussed. And if there's any questions after, we can certainly address those. In addition, if there's an additional presentation that we need to do, if we need to drill down, we can address that at that time. Okay?
Thank you. Jonathan, did you want to take over from now?
Yes. Thanks, Elizabeth. And to the council, thank you for inviting us to present this evening. We're going to go over is exactly what Elizabeth has mentioned. So just to kind of go through the contents or the agenda for tonight. The first thing we're going to do is a self insurance primer. And the reason we like to do that is we know that not everybody is always familiar with the concepts associated with being self insured. So we want to make sure that we have a good established framework for the conversation. Then we're going to talk about the existing arrangements. So those arrangements that are currently in place at the city for both active employees and retirees. We're also going to mention a legacy arrangement that's no longer in place. And the reason we're going to talk about that is that it does impact some of the cost information that we're going to look at. And absence some of the history, some of the cost information may look funny. So we want to make sure that we're framing that. And then we'll also answer questions about the self insured costs, the fully insured costs for the city. And then we're going to summarize total costs. So the cost, the cost section, what we're going to see is a lot of it is similar information. It's just broken down differently so we can see what segment of the population costs what. And then if there's any questions, I would be happy to stop and answer those questions as we go. If there's something that isn't clear, I can definitely answer those questions as we go.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Adel Hawk.
Can we have copy of what he's going to present to us?
Sarah, would it be possible to get a copy to City Hall?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the first, the first thing we're going to talk about is a self insured primer. So this is, this is just to go over what it means to be self insured. So in, in the insurance space, there's really two types of financing arrangements for welfare plans. And welfare plans are things like medical, prescription drug, dental vision. And those two financing arrangements are fully insured and self insured. What fully insured means is that that is the simple risk transfer to an insurance company, meaning the insured pays a premium to the insurance carrier. The insurance carrier accepts all the risk. It's the truest form of insurance that most of us are familiar with. So if you buy life insurance or car insurance, that is a fully insured arrangement. Self insured is when an employer effectively serves as its own insurance company. And what that means is that instead of paying an insurance company to accept the risk and pay claims for different medical services, prescription services, dental services, instead, what the employer does is they pay those services direct as they happen. So if somebody goes to the pharmacy and fills a script for a $250 medication, that $250 less whatever the person pays and copays becomes the financial responsibility of the plan or of the employer. And the reason, we'll get into some of the reasons behind that, but self insurance is the funding arrangement that is favored by a majority of larger employers. And that's both in the public and private space. Part of the reason for that is, as we're all hearing about it almost constantly in the news about the way that healthcare costs continue to go up and up and up, self insurance is one of those strategies to better help control costs over time. And I'll point this back out towards the end of the meeting. And I want to, when we get into the costs, I'm going to bring you back to this concept. And I'll show you why, why the city has benefited from being self insured. Okay? For larger employers like the city, costs, costs are always driven, regardless of whether you're fully insured or self insured, costs are always driven by how people utilize the benefits. Okay? The more benefits people utilize, the higher your costs are. Okay? The only difference between self insured and fully insured is when those costs are realized. Okay? So we've got a fancy little saying here, in fully insured arrangements, claims costs are deferred, not insured. And what I mean by that is in the event that there are lots of medical services being utilized by employees and retirees that are on the city's benefit plans, what's going to happen is if you are fully insured, the insurance company is just going to ask for a much bigger increase at renewal. Okay? So you may not recognize those costs now. You're going to recognize those costs later. And then in a self insured arrangement, it's the opposite. You're really recognizing those costs as you go as opposed to seeing those cost impact at your renewal. Also, self insured arrangements allow employers to avoid some of the extra expenses that you might otherwise see in a fully insured arrangement. Things like premium taxes, risk retention. That's a fancy, that's a fancy word for the fact that insurance companies, even though they're in the risk business, they tend not to like to take risk because they want to be profitable. Okay? So they charge retention up charges to pad their, pad their risk position. And then there's state mandates, you know, as a self insured employer, whether you're a public sector employer or a private sector employer, if you're self insured, you're regulated at the federal level, not at the state level. Oh, the next page is a schematic of how insurance companies and insurance plans are constructed in the medical and prescription space. Okay? And some of these concepts apply to the dental and optical as well. But really, in a, in an insurance plan, there is a claims payer. There's an entity paying claims. Okay? So that's going to be Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, Health Alliance Plan, somebody that's getting the claims from the doctors and the hospitals, and then adjudicating those claims accordingly. Then there is a pharmacy benefit manager or a PBM. That's a term again, if you've probably been hearing a lot in the news recently, the PBMs get a lot of bad press because of how they inflate costs and things like that. And then there's the stop loss vendor. And the stop loss vendor is, is the insurance company that provides financial risk protection to a self insured plan or self insured employer. And we'll talk about each of those. But right now, the city's plans and you, you all have your administration is performed by Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan. They're the ones that send ID cards. They're the ones that adjudicate claims, manage eligibility, things like that. And then there are a number of cost containment solutions right now too that are effectively layered into the current medical plan and prescription plan. And those are Pillar RX, which is a way to help reduce the cost of really, really high cost medications. A program called Fresh Bennys, which provides telemedicine services or virtual visits to folks. And then Elect RX, which is a way, an optional program where people can choose to import medications from Canada or Australia or other, other countries that kind of follow our FDA. And then there's also the network access. So right now, the medical and prescription plan utilizes the Blue Cross Blue Shield National PPO Network. So that's the, that's the portion of the plan that allows you to see certain doctors in certain hospitals. Okay? So if you're familiar with the term in-network or out-of-network with a benefit plan, that's the network it's referring to. Okay? Right now, the city uses Blue Cross. So on the pharmacy side, while it looks to be integrated with the medical plan, the pharmacy benefit manager is actually Express Scripts. Okay? That is all handled behind the scenes. So to the retirees and the employees of the city, they may not even know that Express Scripts is the pharmacy benefit manager because it just looks like it's Blue Cross. But in fact, it actually is Express Scripts. Beginning January 1 of 2022, that's going to change to Optum. And that is a Blue Cross wide change that the city really doesn't have much control over.
Was that 2021, 2022?
2022, January 1, 2022.
So the beginning of the next year.
Correct. Right? And then the stop loss vendor, again, stop loss is a form of insurance that provides financial protection to the self insured plan. You know, in the event, you know, you hear about it in the news now, somebody could have a million dollar medical expense. Right? The city would not want to take on the risk. If one of the employees or one of the retirees had a million dollar medical expense, you wouldn't want to take on the entire cost. So stop loss insurance effectively caps the city's risk for those large, those large claimants. Okay? We'll talk a little bit about that as well. So right now, the city pays an administration fee to Blue Cross Blue Shield for all of those different services. And that's a, that's a flat administrative fee. Every year it changes. It goes up somewhere in the neighborhood of 1% to 3%. And that's paid, like I said, to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And then I mentioned before, the stop loss insurance. Stop loss insurance is also provided by Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan. And right now, the city assumes the first $130,000 of medical and prescription claims risk on any family unit. Okay? So if I'm an employee of the city and my family, all of my family members, so I have a wife and two kids, if all of our claims in total surpass $130,000, the city stops paying for those claims and Blue Cross starts paying for them. The, the dental and the optical insurance don't have stop loss insurance. And those benefits don't need stop loss insurance because they're relatively low cost. And by design, the benefits have maximums included in them. So, you know, the dental insurance may only cover $2,000 a year of claims. Okay? So you don't need to buy stop loss insurance because you already know what your, your risk threshold is. So before I move on, are there any, any questions on self insurance or kind of the general concept of what that means or how, what's included?
I just got a question. Do the employees that turn 66 or 67 have Medicare?
Yes, the age of 65 and yes, when, when they turn 65, they will enroll in Medicare. And we'll get to that. It's a great segue into the next section because we'll talk a little bit more about that.
All right, thank you.
So the existing arrangements right now, so we talked a little bit about the self insured plan and what that means, but the city also has a fully insured plan. And the fully insured plan is a Medicare Advantage Plan for retirees, eligible retirees of the city that are Medicare age. And so that plan only covers retirees that are enrolled in Medicare. And it covers both their medical costs and their prescription drug costs. And you might ask yourself, well, why do we have two different arrangements? Why, you know, why should we separate the Medicare retirees from the pre-Medicare retirees? When Councilman Musket said that, you know, when people turn 65, they become eligible for Medicare. And that is a federal program that the city wants to leverage as strongly as possible because you, the city wants to transfer as much risk and as much cost from itself over to the feds in the form of the Medicare program. Okay? So the Medicare Advantage Plan is a conduit to fully maximize the different Medicare subsidies that are, that are available to employers that offer benefits to seniors. Okay?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Adel Hawk.
Does that mean we buy the supplement insurance for those retiree who read 65?
That is correct. So a Medicare Advantage Plan merges both base Medicare and the supplemental coverage for Medicare all into one package.
Then we pay for it as a city?
Correct. Correct. So, so the city pays a flat premium to Blue Cross for that Medicare Advantage Plan.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan?
Yes.
So the city pays the premium, the city pays the premium to Medicare and then Medicare covers the the participants, the retirees?
So, so actually, the premium is paid to Blue Cross. So a Medicare Advantage Plan, what that is, is it's an insurance company effectively taking on the responsibilities of Medicare. Okay? So Blue Cross is, is serving as Medicare for the Medicare retirees that are covered by the city.
So, so they're actually not covered by Medicare. They're covered, Medicare pays the premium to Blue Cross and Blue Cross and effect is Medicare.
Correct.
Primary cost.
Correct. So just to be clear, the retirees still have Medicare. But by being enrolled in a Medicare Advantage Plan, you're exactly right. The federal Medicare program sends funds to Blue Cross Blue Shield to help finance the costs of those retirees. And the only thing the city is paying for is the supplemental coverage. Okay? So it's a much, yes.
At this time, does the employee pay anything out of their pocket to, you know, to get this Medicare advantage?
Elizabeth, are people contribute? I think it's based on their, their CB, the collective bargaining agreements and then also their current collective bargaining agreements and then the collective bargaining agreement that they retired under is what dictates whether or not they contribute towards the costs of the Medicare coverage.
Okay. Another question, Jonathan. If an employee reads 65 and doesn't want to buy this Medicare advantage, can we still cover him under the normal insurance we have?
No.
It's mandatory?
It's mandatory, right. That the Medicare Advantage Plan is the platform that the city has chosen to meet its obligations to provide healthcare for Medicare age retirees.
Dan, if I may, it's been spelled out in every contract and it has been in practice for 25 years.
And if I may, I'm also on that through another company, obviously. And it's actually the best way to go for the employee.
Yeah, the, the, the feedback that we get, not just from retirees from the city, but for other clients that we work with, other employers that have, the, the feedback is very positive. And it mainly is a result of the fact that Medicare can be very confusing because there's part A and part B and part D. This Medicare Advantage Plan rolls everything up for the retirees. So the only thing they have to know is they have the Blue Cross Medicare Advantage Plan. They don't have to navigate all the different parts of Medicare to understand their benefits. So any, any more questions before we move on? Okay. So talking a little bit more about the existing arrangements. We talked about the self insured arrangement. The self insured arrangement is really made up of a couple core cost components. And those cost components are the administrative fees. And we talked about that earlier. So that's just the fee that the city pays to Blue Cross to administer the self insured plan. The stop loss insurance, so that's again, the catastrophic risk protection that the city, the city pays for. And then the last thing is the claims. That is, the claims are the medical, prescription drug, dental vision. It's the services that the employees and the retirees are consuming. And costs can really be broken down into those three buckets.
Jonathan? When, when an employee or retiree go to hospital and he has a claim and Blue Cross or Blue Shield process it and they say, this is the X amount of dollar, you know, you should pay, who processed this payment at the city level?
So the, the city actually, it's somewhat of a complicated arrangement. The city is on what's called a quarterly settlement process with Blue Cross. The quarterly settlement says, Blue Cross says, City of Dearborn Heights, you give us X amount of dollars every month. And that, that those dollars should cover all of those claims. Okay? At the end of that quarter, then Blue Cross says, you gave us, you know, X dollars. This is how much we paid out. And either we're going to give you a refund or we're going to charge you the balance. Okay? So, so it's actually a very simple banking transaction for the city. The city's not having to, you know, manage a bunch of like unique payments as you go. It's, it's one payment a month, effectively.
So does the human resource receive those payments and authorize it?
Yeah. Correct. So what we would do, so in fact, I think we just did this. Claudia on our team would review that first and then provide that to me with her findings. We would then send that to Elizabeth with an explanation of how the costs are broken down and confirmation that we've reviewed it. And then I believe, Elizabeth, you send that to the comptroller, right? For the actual banking transactions. Right? Now, the reason we review that is, and it hasn't happened in a while, but I've actually been working with the city for a number of years now. We have found mistakes in that settlement process and sometimes significant mistakes that have been made by Blue Cross. So it's important to have a review of that done so that the city isn't disadvantaged by, you know, if Blue Cross makes a mistake on that settlement process. We found situations where Blue Cross was double, double counting claims and things like that. If, if I'm not mistaken, I want to say it was back in 2014 or 2015, we found over a half a million dollar mistake on one of those settlements. So we also talked about the cost containment solutions too. We talked about Fresh Bennys. Fresh Bennys, it's a, if you're familiar with Teladoc, the virtual visit service, that is, Fresh Bennys is the platform that the city uses to offer that benefits to employees. It also includes a patient advocacy service. So if somebody gets a bill that they don't agree with, Fresh Bennys has a solution where they, they, the employee can call an advocate and that advocate can actually work on their behalf to settle a bill with a medical provider. So the, the terminology that you're hearing about in the news a lot right now is surprise medical billing. The city has a solution through Fresh Bennys to help employees in the event they ever have that problem. Pillar RX is another solution. That's actually brand new as of January 1. And that's a mandatory program for high cost specialty medications. These are the medications that you always see on TV. So if you ever wondered, every medication you see on TV probably has a price tag of about $3,000 a month. Okay? And so that, that's a, that's a very large liability for the city. You know, so Pillar RX, what that does is it leverages manufacturers assistance programs or patient assistance programs so that the city doesn't have to pay the full cost of the medication. And neither does the, the employer, the retiree. So this program, what they do is they leverage the financial assistance programs through drug manufacturers. What ends up happening is the city pays less for the drug and the member ends up getting that drug at no cost. So their copay is zero for those meds. And the truth is, you know, for a drug that costs $3,000, collecting a $10 copay on a $3,000 medication is not that big of a deal. And then the last thing, we put it in, but there hasn't been a, there hasn't been any utilization of the program thus far. But it's a voluntary program that allows people to import medications from Canada, Australia, or New Zealand. This is to help people if they, you know, are taking a high cost medication. If you're not familiar, a lot of times the cost of those same exact medications in a foreign country could be 50%, 25% of what it costs in the States. Okay? And again, it's voluntary. People don't have to use it. And as evidenced by the fact that we don't have any utilization right now, people aren't using it right now. So we mentioned again, the city offers a fully insured Medicare Advantage Plan. And the Medicare retirees are really unique, like I mentioned before, because of the Medicare, because of Medicare and how that plays with an employer based benefit plan. I think one of the things that's really important for the council to, to understand and the folks at the city to understand is that there's an element of working with Medicare retirees that if you don't do that right, it can end up having a significant impact on your OPAB liabilities. So your actuarial valuation, if you're not taking advantage of all of those Medicare subsidies, what you could end up finding is you're inadvertently increasing your, your OPAB liabilities because the actuaries can only take into consideration certain Medicare subsidies. So if you're, if you're trying to access care for Medicare retirees through an inefficient platform, the, the actual cash cost might be the same, but your OPAB liabilities just went up. So that's why, that's another reason that that Medicare Advantage Plan is in place is it's an effort to better control the OPAB liabilities. And with Public Act 202, that's becoming a much bigger deal.
Jonathan?
Yes.
What would be the, what would be the significance of the OPEB liabilities if we do not pay attention to this program that the Medicare Advantage?
It could easily be 10% higher than they are. And 10% on your OPAB liabilities is a big number.
Looking at 17 million dollars.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next thing I wanted to talk about is the way that the city complies with Public Act 152. Public, Public Act 152 is the state legislation that effectively governs how much public that effectively governs how much public employers can pay for insurance for their employees. So, uh, I believe it was January one of twenty eighteen in conjunction with, um, some of the renegotiated collective bargaining agreements. Um, the city decided to comply with Public Act one fifty-two via the, via the hard caps. Okay, the hard caps are, um, are published every year in April by the state, by Treasury. Um, and it says, those hard caps say, you can pay X amount for single coverage, Y amount for, um, two-person coverage, and Z amount for, um, full family coverage. And then the difference between those hard caps and what the true cost of the plan is um, needs to be paid for by the employees via pre-tax payroll deductions. So, part of the renewal process every year that my team performs on behalf of the, the city is we, we do all of those calculations. We calculate what the rates are, we take the hard caps, and then we figure out what the payroll deductions need to be for each of the different medical plans that are offered by the city to employees.
Uh, Jonathan? For the drop program participants, even the one who, uh, terminate their, uh, employment with the city, they still covered, uh, like, uh, any normal retiree, or they have any special, uh, or different, uh, treatment?
No, 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 no special treatment. So if they are, I should specify, if they are actively employed, if they're still actively employed by the city, they, even if they're in a drop program, they're still considered an employee in the eyes of the state for Public Act one fifty-two. And therefore, they pay, they, they pay the payroll deductions for the medical insurance. If they're truly retired, then it, then whatever they're paying is, you know, dependent on their collective bargaining agreement that they retired under, okay? Um, now there, if there are some folks that are in the drop, um, that have access to a very generous medical plan, but they also pay more for it because the costs are higher, okay? Um, I will say this too, um, if I could add, when we did, uh, Elizabeth, did you have something to add? Oh, I think you're still on mute.
Let me unmute her. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, thanks, thank you.
You're welcome.
So it, so with regards to the drop, it depends when they enter the drop, what, um, contract they fall under, that all is driven by their contribution. So, um, it's not a one-size-fits-all in this particular situation. So there's three contracts that govern the drop, the fire, and then there's two police, two P O M, one for command and one for the patrol officers. So it depends when they enter the drop, um, when, you know, when they would be eligible for retiree and what their contract said at the time of their entry on the drop. That is what, you know, that kind of drives the contribution rate, not, so it's not a hundred percent based on the hard cap for all people in the drop.
Yep.
So, uh, basically, uh, depends on the union contract and their negotiations. That's what they would pay as con, their contribution to this plan.
Correct.
Same with retirees as well.
Yep. Now, the, the good news is that when we implemented this back in twenty eighteen, um, we got tremendous engagement from employees at the city. We usually, we don't see that level of engagement a lot of times in the public sector. We offered, what we did in twenty eighteen was we offered a number of new plans because we are introducing payroll deductions that were a lot higher than what employees had traditionally been accustomed to paying. What we also wanted to do was offer a wide range of different options so people could pick the type of insurance that bet, best fit their needs. Because some people, they don't have a lot of medical needs, so they don't want to pay a lot out of their paycheck for something that they're not using. And so, we get, we had tremendous engagement, and it, the, the neat thing about it is if you look at the way that employees are enrolled in the different medical plan options that are offered, the distribution is, is really neat. And, and what I mean by that is, you see people in the different plans instead of all enrolled in the same plan. And that means we're achieving the objective of, of giving people a nice menu to order off of, uh, where, where we're meeting the needs of people and employees kind of in different spots in their life. All right, so I want to be also transparent with our engagement. Um, you know, we've, our engagement with the city is one that's founded on transparency. Um, unlike a lot of insurance agents, um, we actually want you guys to know how much we're making. Frankly, because we feel that we earn it. Uh, but the other thing is, it allows us to give the city advice um, without question of whether or not that advice is being influenced by commissions or things like that. And, um, and we believe philosophically, that's an important part of fixing healthcare. Um, that we, we need to make sure that our interests are aligned with the cities. And that our interests as your advisors are not aligned with, um, trying to maximize our compensation. So, as you can see here, um, our total compensation for the year is a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Okay, so we're billing, um, in twenty twenty-one, our per-quarter fees, twenty-five thousand four hundred. Um, and that's, that amounts to a hundred and one thousand six hundred annually. Okay, note that we actually reduced that quarterly fee, um, from twenty twenty. And that is because, um, we saw a slight uptick in the commissions that we were making, that Blue Cross pays. Um, and because of that, we felt it was fair to reduce the fees that we were charging to the city. So we get, we do get paid a commission by, by Blue Cross that's tied to the stop-loss premium. And that stop-loss, or that commission on the stop-loss premium is three and a half percent. That is a standard commission, and the reason we collect that is because even if the city told Blue Cross, we don't want to pay that three and a half percent, they would not change your premium rate. Okay, so that is just, it, it's an efficient way to compensate us without having to compensate us directly. The same goes for the Medicare Advantage Premium. Um, we get paid a commission associated with the Medicare Advantage Plan. And the total of the commissions and what we're billing the city direct amounts to about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars a year. Uh, but I also want to make clear that we're taking part of that a hundred and sixty-two thousand, and we are paying for, um, the city's benefits administration system called Ebix Energy. And there's a, a, approximately twenty-five thousand dollar fee that we pay on behalf of the city. Um, so the city can use that system, that web system.
Jonathan, is this system not in control or part of Plant Moran?
It is not ours. It is, we do not own Ebix Energy. Also, the contract is between the city and Ebix Energy. We are just acting as the, effectively, the payer for the bills.
Thank you.
Any other questions on our engagement or our, or, or, or our compensation?
A new opinion? Go ahead, Dave. Go ahead, Dave.
Jonathan, I've got a question for you. Um, I know you mentioned Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Is there any other options of other, um, health insurance companies? So, for example, uh, just hypothetically, I know in Wayne County, it's much cheaper, uh, to get like Health Choice or Healthy Choice, I think it's one of those two. Uh, and I think it's sponsored, if I'm not mistaken, in some way or another through the county. Is that something that would be an option if it's the same type of coverage or, you know, pretty good coverage for the employees?
There are a host of other options. Blue Cross tends to be the biggest player in town. Um, uh, they also enjoy the most, um, support from the unions. Um, and people, employees just tend to be more comfortable with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, because it's, it's a known entity. But there are many, many options that we could consider. In fact, we just helped Clinton Township, um, replace Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Um, another self-insured employer, we actually completely redesigned their benefits, um, not using Blue Cross, Blue Shield in Michigan. So there are definitely other options out there.
So the reason, the reason I ask Jonathan is, if, if our ultimate concern obviously is savings to the city, I do understand at the same time, because the balancing act two, you're, which provides good coverage for the employees. With that being the case, and, and maybe this is something Elizabeth, uh, can answer, is this basically, is having Blue Cross, Blue Shield, which without a doubt is considered, at least conceptually, the best out there? Is that one of the things that we attract, use to attract employees to work for us? And therefore, yeah, we pay a little bit more than maybe Health Choice or any other particular one, but that's where we attract employees to our city? Or can we look at the option of buying possibly, um, similar insurance, but at better, better premiums?
So one of the things that I have to state offhand is you have existing contracts and collective bargaining agreements. So you have to have, the language right now is Blue Cross or equivalent. That's what a lot of them say. So you have to really look at that equivalency. It, and when you do something and you offer, if you're going to offer a secondary coverage, you have to see what that actually, the impact is going to do to the entire group. You know, um, if you just went to, let's say, a hap, a hap arrangement, hap is not going to work for your out-of-state retirees. So how do you address that? Because you have legacy costs and you have a promise based on a contract and a retiree that, that retired in the nineteen nineties, and they enjoyed this benefit, and now you're telling them they're going to hap, and there aren't any hap, hap's not going to be accepted in their state that they reside. So there are some other, um, you know, things that we need to consider. Um, you know, we have certainly changed benefits over the years. We did change retiree benefits. Um, we've substantially changed how, as Jonathan's going through, how active, how we've purchased insurance actively. You know, and it, it does take quite a bit of work because you want to do the work, and Jonathan, having gone through this with another township, it takes, or a city, takes a lot of work, working with the unions, focus groups, retirees, because what you, the work you do on the front end relieves you of some of the backend problems, which is lawsuits. And that's what we look to avoid.
And even in that regard, I mean, um, our entity is the one that helped, um, Genesee County recently. Um, and we spent a year laying the, the framework for a change. And, um, they still had a retiree group, uh, file lawsuit against the county for making a change. Um, the case law is also, um, you know, it seems like it, e- every, every community is different. So every time you try and find a, um, a reference point on case law to make changes, like, especially for retirees, it really gets into the nitty-gritty and the, the very detailed language that we're, that were part of the collective bargaining agreements that, um, those retirees retired under. So sometimes you find situation where, even if you do all the great work upfront, um, and in the case of Genesee County, we, the circuit court judge issued an injunction about nine days before the effective date of the change. So, you know, you could do the, all the best work that you can, and it, sometimes it's still just, it doesn't work legally.
And, and we experienced that ourselves here in Dearborn Heights, and things were tied up, and it did delay things, and it delayed savings that we probably could have enjoyed. Ultimately, you know, we prevailed, but, you know, that is a concern. And to address one of your other questions, is, is this something that attracts people to come here? So I think that it is definitely in our advantage, um, that people are attracted to, to the benefits that we offer. Because as we all are very aware, the starting pay is not, it's not what our competitors or our surrounding communities offer, so.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
No problem. Um, so one thing I really, I wanted to touch on quick before we get into the numbers, is the legacy arrangement. So, um, we mentioned January one, twenty eighteen, um, in conjunction with some of the negotiations that, that took effect, um, uh, on that date. That was also the date that the, the city, um,'s arrangement with Health Alliance Plan was terminated, okay? So what ended up happening was the actives through negotiations, um, eliminated Health Alliance Plan as an option. Um, this, this was mainly because it was in the employees' financial best interest and the city's best financial interest to do that. Uh, but what ended up happening was by eliminating the actives from the Health Alliance Plan arrangement, Health Alliance Plan in turn came back and said, if you're taking the actives away, we will no longer insure your retirees. So the, so Health Alliance Plan effectively terminated the plan for the retirees, um, even though that's not necessarily what the city wanted, okay? The reason I, yes.
Did that have any financial impact on the city?
It, it did, but it was all positive, and we'll, we'll show that. Um, it, it actually turned out very much in the city's favor financially, okay? Um, so I'm going to get into the numbers now. Um, these numbers are kind of similar, they're just all broken down different ways. Um, and I'm not going to belabor this because we'll send up, up a copy of this presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions as you, as you get more into the detail on these numbers, or if you want further detail on them. If we can provide them to you, we will, okay? Um, but what you can see here on this first page is the different components of the self-insured plan from twenty sixteen all the way through twenty twenty-one, and the twenty twenty-one figures are all projected. Those are all the figures that, that we projected and provided to the city associated with the self-insured medical, um, and prescription drug plan, okay? So you can see, um, in twenty eighteen, so if you go from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen and you're looking at the total costs, you can see that the total costs jump way up. And the reason for that is that's in twenty eighteen, we got all those Health Alliance Plan members that previously were on hap. They were now all on the, they were all on the Blue Cross, Blue Shield self-insured plan at that point, okay? But as you can see from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, healthcare costs, you know, other than a, a small, um, anomaly in twenty twenty, the cost projections for active employees, and by the way, this is for active employees, have been fairly static, okay? This is great news. You know, the market trend for healthcare costs is seven to ten percent a year. The city of Dearborn Heights is not experiencing a seven to ten percent increase in healthcare costs per year. You, the city is very much a kind of an outlier in a good way in that regard. And a lot of that has to do with the engagement of the employees back in the middle of twenty seventeen during bargaining. You gotta give credit where credit's due. The employees were very engaged, they made very good, um, decisions on how they're enrolling in plans, and they're understanding their benefits better than the average employee at other communities do.
Jonathan?
Yes.
For all the employees in the city, including the fire and police?
It is.
Court, and court, and dispatch, every, every group. And we engage them every year. We involve, we have a kind of a committee that we meet. Um, you know, we did it virtually this year, and we remain in contact, and we continue to educate and do the best we can, and we receive their feedback, and we run with it. If, if they have a good idea, we run with it.
Yep.
Okay, um, Elizabeth, uh, just a request, if that possible. Uh, next time you meet with them, if you can, inform the city council of what's happening, please.
Okay, so, you know, a lot of that is within, you know, like, we meet with the bargaining agreements, right? Or, you know, with the bargaining units, some of that, so, but we can, you know, we can tell people what, you know, direction we're going in. The last couple of years, because things have been so good, we've kept, we've kept going in our direction. We just added a couple little things, you know, like the Fresh Bennys over the years, additional pieces on that.
Okay. They just, I like to know, you know, when things like that happen, if there is anything the city council can, can help with.
So the next page is the, um, is the dental and the vision costs for active employees. Again, twenty six, twenty sixteen through twenty twenty one. You see again, a big jump in twenty eighteen. That was really more so in terms of how the costs were being allocated by actives and retirees. There was a change in, in how we were doing that for dental and vision claims only. So that explains why and you'll see there's a corresponding favorable adjustment to the retirees when we get, when we get to their costs. But again, dental and vision costs tend not to have big changes year to year. Okay, tho- those costs aren't, don't experience the same types of changes. And the, the reason for that is they, you know, there aren't new glasses being invented, like there are new prescription drugs being invented, right? You know, a dental cleaning is a dental cleaning. Other than silver versus white fillings. It, it, there's not a lot of advancement in that field like there is in the medical field.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Okay, but at, at the same time, looking at this, you got from two, two thousand sixteen, you got a hundred and sixty two thousand dental claims. With two hundred and thirty nine active members. Then you got in two thousand twenty one projected less active members. Yet it's, uh, it's not doubled, but close to being doubled.
Yeah, so again, that's going to, that's going to be more because of how we were allocating costs between actives and retirees. When we look at total costs, you're going to see that those, there, there wasn't a huge jump in, in costs. This is just active, so we're not including the retirees in these figures. So, and we'll get to the, we'll get to the, the retirees. I think it'll make more sense when you see that. All right, so the, the next page here, this is retirees and the self insured plan. And it's the, it's the same story from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen. You had all those hap people come in to the plan in twenty eighteen. They left hap, went into the self insured plan. That's explaining the big cost. But again, you can even see in twenty twenty, even though the actives had an anomaly on the high side. The retirees had an anomaly to the good side. Okay, so in total, costs have been fairly static. We have projected a higher cost in twenty twenty one. A lot of that has to do with COVID and people that deferred medical care. Let's be honest, you know, we've heard it, you know, the seniors are the, the ones most impacted by COVID. And they're the ones that are most likely to have deferred care. And because of that could have a more significant medical condition now because of that.
Jonathan, does this include fire and police?
It does. It includes, it's, so this is going to be general retirees and three forty five. So here, here is the, here's the retirees, the dental and the vision costs. So you can see Councilman Abdallah, if you look at twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. You see how the, the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and then twenty eighteen, it goes way down.
Right.
That's the offsetting in terms of the cost allocation that I was talking about before. Okay. So that, the, the, the truth is, it's just, it's really hard for us to allocate those costs the same way back in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen as we are now. Because the, the way that we do that and the data that we have is based on now and not based on then.
But it's still, but Ray. Why is there two hundred and nine retire, enrollees and dental and vision and only a hundred and forty one in the medical? In the last page.
It's a fantastic question and we'll get to that. The reason is because regardless of whether somebody is on Medicare or not on Medicare, they're in the dental and vision here. But if in the medical side, if they're on Medicare, they're enrolled in, they're enrolled in the Medicare plan. So we'll get to the Medicare stuff too. So Councilman Muscat, you've been my, my segue guy all, all evening. So if, if you look here at the next page, what you have is the Medicare Advantage enrollment and costs over time. So if you look again, while we've had increasing numbers of retirees. If you look from twenty eighteen all the way to twenty twenty one, and, and even in twenty twenty one, Blue Cross came back with a significant reduction. And this is what I was talking about earlier. The feds provided a deeper subsidy associated with Medicare Advantage Plans. And the city was the immediate beneficiary of that. If you were, if you were insuring Medicare retirees on a different platform, you may not have experienced that cost reduction for twenty twenty one. So the Medicare Advantage Plan for the retirees is performing financially very, very well. This just, this just, uh, this is a page for the hap numbers. Again, you can see that all the hap numbers go to zero in twenty eighteen. And that's when hap terminated their, the, the arrangement with the city. All right, so total costs. So if we look at total costs, and I know, I think we're up against, are we up against time?
We have four hours.
Oh, we have four hours.
Are you towards the end?
Yes, we are, we are towards the end.
Okay, finish up and then we'll open it up to questions and then public questions or comment.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to move to the end because the, the other pages that we just kind of skipped by were just. It, it was just summing up the prior pages. So it gave, it gives y'all an opportunity to have those numbers totaled up without having to do the math yourself. But I, what I really wanted to focus on is the total costs. And this is actives, retirees, medical, dental, prescription drug. It's effectively the city's entire welfare benefit plan. You can look from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty one. So in twenty seventeen, that was the last year of hap. So I think it was Councilman Abrahak, you asked if the city enjoyed a financial advantage from when hap terminated the arrangement. If you look from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, total costs dropped by half a million dollars. So that worked out most definitely in the city's favor. And again, we have to give credit to the, the, the labor groups because they were instrumental in helping get there as well. And if you look from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, and remember twenty twenty includes some projections. Some very conservative projections, just in case we see some negative implications due to COVID. Healthcare costs have been effectively flat. This is, it's unheard of. Like, I would love to say that, that, like, I can pinpoint exactly why costs have performed so well. But I think it's a combination of engagement from employees.
Jonathan, please.
A little bit of luck. There you go. Newly noted. So for the last five years. The city has enjoyed a very favorable cost position on, on healthcare. And including dental and vision. So that is my presentation. As you, you might be able to tell, I'm fairly passionate about this topic. I'm happy to provide any more data. Again, if, if we can get it, I'm happy to provide it. But I love talking about this stuff, so if you ever, if you're ever interested, feel free to contact me and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do any of the council people have any further questions? Councilwoman Bella?
So Jonathan, got a question for you. So in this particular case here, when you go from two thousand sixteen to twenty one. We went away from hap, which is, to the best of my knowledge, is, is, is cheaper insurance. But how do we go from in two thousand seventeen, eight point six five four million to Blue Cross and then you have the half million dollar drop? I'm, I'm, I'm.
Yep.
Just that's seeing why that would be. Blue Cross, as far as I know, is more expensive. The, the other question I had for you is the type, the type of Blue Cross we have. Do we have a type of Blue Cross where you have to have a referral? Or is this the one where they could go pretty much the Cadillac of, of Blue Cross where they could go pretty much anywhere?
So the, the retirees definitely have the Cadillac plan. The active employees have a range. None of the city's plans require a referral. But there are a lot of retiree, or a lot of active employees at the city that are enrolled in a qualified high deductible health plan, including a health savings account. This is, yeah, this is not, I would not classify that as Cadillac insurance by any means. But what has happened is those employees that have enrolled in the health savings account. They, those are the ones that have taken the time to understand the finances of insurance and how to make that plan work for them. And many of them have come back year after year. And I know Jennifer's on the phone and she's the one that does the open enrollment meetings with all the employees. They have come back and said, you know, I was skeptical, but this is working for me. This works for me financially. It's better than it was when I was paying all that money out of my paycheck and I didn't really know what I was paying for. Now, to answer your question about how did we achieve the savings in twenty eighteen after eliminating hap. This is a, it's a nuance of insurance, okay? When you have two different carriers with, with a medical plan specifically. You would think, hey, it's competition, it's going to drive costs down. It actually does the exact opposite. What happens in insurance, insurance companies, they're all in the risk game. Okay, so if you have two, two separate insurance companies and they don't know which part of the population they're going to get. Both of the companies are going to assume that they're going to get the worst part of the population. And therefore they have to push their costs up in order to cover that risk position by consolidating into a single risk pool. The full population of both actives and retirees can be assessed by one insurance company. And it also, it also provides the city, by extension us, because the city has hired us to help negotiate that. We have much more negotiating leverage in order to control costs. So insurance is one of those weird spots that just because you have more insurance carriers. The competition thing does not, does not work in insurance that way. At least in group insurance.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Bellhawk, you have another question?
I have many questions.
Okay.
All right. If we divide the eight million by the number of the retiree and the insured in the city. How much the cost per person annually approximately?
So we can do that pretty quick. So it's, the, the enrollment is going to be a little squishy because of the way Medicare enrollees are counted. Medicare participants are actually counted individually. So if a family, like if a retiree is eligible to cover a spouse. And most of the time, we, we consider that one retiree in the Medicare space. That's actually considered two retirees. So the cost, the per person cost is a little. It's a little squishy. Yeah, it's not going to be very accurate. That's why, that's why I wanted to total this. But Councilman, if, if we didn't put the calculations in here, but if, if it's okay, I can get that to Elizabeth for distribution.
That's fine.
Okay.
My second question. Who is the actuary who decide how much we need to levy on our residents to cover the insurance cost annually?
So the, the actual, so the, uh, so our entity, Plant Moran, we are actually projecting costs every year. As part of the renewal, but those projections are based on the renewal documents that are presented to us by Blue Cross Blue Shield in Michigan. So we're, we're projecting what claims costs are going to be. But certain things like the Medicare Advantage premium, that's a fixed premium dollar. So that, that rate is provided to us by Blue Cross Blue Shield. And what, all we have to do is we take that, that rate and gross up the number of expected retirees and we kind of know what the cost is going to be. Now, if the question is the actuary that is doing the valuations and the, and the the OPEB, the OPEB or pay as you go costs or the ARCs, that's Nihard.
Okay. This number, eight million in sum is collected, I believe, under Act of three forty five levy. All of it.
Some of, some of it, some of it's paid for through three forty five. So the, the police and fire would fall under three forty five. But general retirees would not fall under Act three forty five.
Okay, should that portion of the Act of three forty five should be controlled by the pension trustee members or is it controlled by the city administration?
I, I think that would have to be determined by, by council and how the trust is set up. But I believe that the city controls the, the trust, the three forty five trust.
But this is, isn't that against the Act of three forty five?
Not that I'm aware of, but again, I think that's a better question for council.
Okay. Now, my last question. I don't know who's going to answer it, if the comptroller or the treasurer or the mayor. I noticed that there is money left over every year from the money we collect. And it says Act of three forty five levy around six hundred and some thousand dollars. Where this money goes, do we receive the cost next year or the future year by that amount or we keep it in, in a fund?
It's, it, it's my, you know, I can't, I don't, I don't want to give a hundred percent answer here because this isn't, this kind of outside my specialty area, but it's my understanding that monies that are collected and placed in trusts for three forty five effectively have to stay there. But it's not, I don't believe the city can unilaterally take funds from a three forty five trust and put them into general assets or something like that. If it's collected through the trust, it, it's the assets of the trust.
Okay, my last question is, since you guys are the experts. We have liability of around hundred and seventy seven million dollars. We contribute one million sixty two thousand to fund one one five to the police and fire. And we contribute four hundred seventy two thousand to the general government. And we supposed to reach forty percent as PA two oh two require within thirty years. What is your recommendation to us since we are the ones who approve the budget? To speed up this, to reduce this liability instead of thirty years. We make it in twenty years and to make sure that all the retiree from the city are covered. So they don't come to one day, they, you know, if God forbid anything happen, there is not enough money in the fund.
Yep. So I don't mean this to sound cavalier, but if I, if I had the surefire answer, I'd be a very wealthy man. The truth is, there isn't a silver bullet on this. The, the best way to go about addressing this is take small bites when you can. Okay, take the opportunities that present themselves. Okay, so what I've seen from a lot of communities is there is a, I'm going to say, there's a lot of inertia. Okay, for status quo. Sometimes in order to take small bites, you have to be willing to make some changes. Okay, so for example. You know, I, I, I don't necessarily want to give ourselves too much of a pat on the back. But you know, one of the reasons that Blue Cross came in with such a large reduction in the Medicare Advantage premiums is that Plant Moran has actually helped other public employers move their Medicare Advantage business to other carriers. Where the competition is much, much stronger because of the, the, the integration with Medicare. Other, other communities have traditionally said, you know, Blue Cross is the, Blue Cross is the gold standard. We don't want to move. There's sometimes an opportunity to reduce costs in the Medicare space. Now, if you're reducing pay as you go costs in the Medicare space, that has an immediate reduction on your OPEB liabilities. So those are the types of things, you may not do. So those are the types of things, you may not do with them. But the, the idea is if there's a willingness to consider it, sometimes it positions the, the community to negotiate something that's more cost effective without having to make any changes at all. But if there's no willingness to consider a change, and that's to Lake Blue Cross, it's going to say, what incentive do we have to help you control your costs? We're, we're not at risk of losing your business.
Thank you. This has been very educational to me and I appreciate Denise for, you know, putting this together, you and Elizabeth, and thank you to my colleagues and to everybody watching. Really, this is eye opening about the big cost in the city. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other council members have any questions before we go to public comment?
No, I, I, I'll just, no questions, but I'll say, Jonathan, thank you so much. That was very informative. I agree with Councilman Abdouak. That was very, very informative. Thank you so much. And I, I definitely learned a lot, got a lot of notes going, so.
Thank you.
Jonathan and Elizabeth, thank you.
Good presentation.
Thank you, everybody. That was a very good presentation. Some of the best I've seen.
And anybody, any audience from the residents have any questions or concerns, raise your hand. You will have a limited three minutes. This time I am not seeing any, is anybody else? At this time, I guess that includes our study session. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth Silverberry and Council Chair.
All right. Thanks, everybody.